Call this meeting to order. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to Tuesday, September 6th council meeting. If you have a cellphone, please turn it off. And we'll start with a moment of silence, please. Thank you. Pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Barnes.
Here.
Reed. Brown. Decker.
Here.
Kraus.
Here.
French.
Here.
And Mayor Domingo.
Here, and thank you. Mayors and councilmembers comments? Are there any comments as we get to Smith? Barnes?
I would like to comment to the council concerning the organizational behavior and organizational culture of City Hall. I've been coming down regularly and I'm seeing a lot of stress on our workers. I'm seeing that some of the department heads are truly carrying heavy workloads. I've been in this seat for six years and I've been asking that, you know, we look to do something to help them. We've, we have given them raises in the union, you know, through collective bargaining has agreed. Now I'm seeing that they're so overworked and after ten years ago, they're still doing 100% of the work level at the best they can, but with 50% less of the manpower. And with our budgets coming up, I'm asking that our manpower start equaling the labor hours. I'm, I'm asking that we look into our budget and see what we can hire. I understand we have some union situations. I've talked to the city manager today and some department heads and they knew I was going to bring this conversation up. I am asking, you know, that we, we look and our city manager, through our council being in agreement, discuss with the union to try to do some language where we could bring on five new people. They can be seasonal, et cetera, et cetera. The language would have to be in conjunction with the unions. The finances would have to be in line with our budget. But I think that we should put this communication on the table for our budget, to balance the budget and to make a budget. I think we have to become, and I'm not trying to supersede Cheryl at all, I did meet with her today, that we need to become innovative, we need to come up with some new ideas, and we need to be unique in trying to make these hirings possible. And I'm seeing the stress level at a point where I'm thinking it's a mental and physical situation with some of these people are going to cause human resource issues. And I'm really telling you, I come down to City Hall at least two to three times a week and I even said to the city manager, you know, maybe at some point in time, you just might want to have a breakout session in the mayor's office. Everybody gets in with donuts and coffee, some fruit baskets, and let them let their hair down. This is how we feel, this is where we're at, because I'm truly concerned that they are the face of our city. When people come in to City Hall to pay their bills, they see our department heads, they see our workers. And if I can see the stress that's on these people, I would actually, you know, you take a look into it too. This is just to put the communication on the table. Thank you. My second comment is, this came out of Detroit. Detroit is targeting their downtown area, just as Albion is. And they have what you call a motor city match, a $50,000 hatch grant. And it's given to the entrepreneurs who come in and want to build downtown. And it's really exploded. However, the complaint was that minorities weren't getting the grant. And I said, oh, well. However, if we're going to be diverse and if Detroit is going to be diverse, you can't look at the grant based on race. You have to look at it at that point in time that it's a target area, the people who receive the grant were seen as the most qualified. Right here in downtown Albion now, we are targeting our area. I represent pretty see one of those, 50% minority, 50% Caucasian. And minority is not just black, it's brown, yellow, white. And it's like, we need to truly be diverse. We need to work together as a people and just start, stop talking about being people. And diversity is not just race. Diversity is in technology, business, medicine, and industry. We need to start looking for it as a community, to come together as one. And Martin Luther King said it best, "Oh, we're going to perish together as food." Thank you.
Any other comments? None? Move on to presentations. Report of findings on the RRC, self-evaluation by Karen Weber.
Hi there. My name is Karen Weber. Glad to be here, thanks for having me. That's okay. With me today is also Michelle Parkinon. She is manager, redevelopment-ready communities. I'm going to be brief today, the recap of the process so far, the report of findings that you have in front of you, and then next steps. This is the RRC mission. This program seeks to empower communities by establishing a solid planning, zoning, and development foundation that's needed for attracting business, it's needed for attracting talent. And these best practices are good for business, the business community, they're also good for the average citizen looking to pull a permit. And I'll get into those best practices in a moment. So, beginning a couple of months ago, actually more than a couple of months, Albion initiated involvement in redevelopment-ready communities. And as a part of that, we do an evaluation of your planning, zoning, and development processes. We do it through research, observation, interviews with a variety of stakeholders, and then reviewing your development materials. I am going to touch on a few of the best practices. I'm available for questions on specific ones. Happy to do that when I'm done here. But just briefly here, so this is 1.1, evaluating your planning, the community planning, and how your redevelopment vision is embedded in the city's planning documents. You can see that there is a red on the scorecard and that green is actually a yellow on my screen. Communities are required to have a master plan reviewed and updated every five years. And we know that you're definitely in the process of developing a new master plan. So, kudos on that. And that'll be the great, a great basis for your capital improvements plan, for a six-year capital improvements plan that's mentioned in here as well. Another best practice, this one is public participation. This looks at how well your city identifies and engages stakeholders on a continual basis. Albion is using a lot of basic and proactive methods to engage your community. These efforts need to just be formalized in a public participation plan so we can be sure that all stakeholders are being reached for all planning processes and not just when the law requires it. Let's see. We also look closely at your zoning ordinance. I spent hours poring through those documents. And you've got a well-articulated site plan review process. It's clear on who's responsible for what. After your master plan is updated, we would suggest a look at these regulations because your ordinances should regulate to the goals that are outlined in your master plan. And so, when you take a look at that ordinance, you can also think about incorporating some items up here like your, like non-motorized transportation, for example. Oh, I think I'm on 3.1. Okay. So, let's move on to 3.2, that's the guide to development. This best practice looks at the accessibility of your planning and development information. Most of the guide to development items that a developer would be looking for are available, easily available on your website. Just a few items need to be added. We will touch on redevelopment-ready sites. This best practice looked at how you identify, vision, and market your priority redevelopment sites. Your work with the Albion Economic Development Corporation is obvious. Their website lists most of your priority redevelopment sites. We are just suggesting that that information be expanded a bit. And then one site be packaged in a, in a nice, user-friendly document to kind of tee it up for a developer, choosing that most important site of yours. And then the last one I'll touch on is your economic development strategy. This best practice looks at the goals and actions that you've identified to strengthen your overall economic health. This type of strategy can be developed as a standalone document, it can be a part of your master plan. There's a lot of ways that this can be accomplished. It's also important that you harness all of the partners that you've got that have a hand in economic development, your downtown, your city, the EDC, and others, just so that no single staff person is carrying all the load. And then everybody's clear on what the direction is, both internally and externally in the development community. All right. So, next steps. Next step is adopting a resolution to proceed. So, months and months ago, you adopted a resolution to engage, which is what brought us in the door to take a look at your processes. This resolution to proceed basically says, we've seen the recommendations, we want to work to implement them. And that allows us at the MEDC to work directly with your staff to provide whatever resources, examples, technical assistance dollars that we can provide to help you accomplish these best practices. When we hand you this report, we, we don't walk away, we become partners with you. I have, you know, 10 to 15 communities that I am working with on these best practices. We ask staff to keep you in the loop on where you're at with RRC. And we ask staff to provide us a brief update every three months on where they're at with these individual items, although we're always in contact between that time period. So, you should be proud of the work that you're doing. You've got a great master plan underway, you've got a great website, you've got a very engaged public and committed boards and committee members, that is obvious. So, once you have met the best practices, then you would be certified as a redevelopment-ready community. Questions? Happy to answer. Yes?
We had talked about in the previous meeting, the timeline. And what exactly are we talking about? I mean, it's not going to be tomorrow. So, this is about a two-year process?
This, in most, for most communities, it is a multi-year process because depending on what a community's, where their needs are, something like a master plan, it takes, it just takes a year or so. And then, looking at your ordinances, that takes time. So, absolutely not to be done overnight and takes a while. Yep, we're flexible on that.
Thank you.
There is no clock.
Thank you.
Sounds like you're heading in the right direction.
Good.
So, good job.
Glad to. No problem. Close this up for you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is the junior cadet program with Harry Bonner and Chief Kip.
Scott, hit the power button. Turn that off unless you need it.
Hi, junior. What's things going?
One more time.
Funny down here. That's how y'all doing.
How are you?
Hey, my line, my line is pressure so they can. Good smile. Do you want to say anything first, Eric?
I've been working with Mr. Bonner in an effort to start a cadet program through Albion Public Safety. We had our first meeting tonight. We met once prior to this, just kind of an introduction of what we were doing. Tonight, we worked on the history of law enforcement. So, they got a little learning of that. Our goal is to run them through generally what a police academy would be like and teach them about what we do and then answer questions that they have on how law enforcement works. I think so far, they're having somewhat of a good time, even though listening to me talk about the history of law enforcement isn't the funnest thing in the world, but, so.
Do you have any upstairs you want to?
Yeah, I think for me, I get tired of watching on TV all the incidents of confrontation between African-American young boys, community, law enforcement, and so forth, the number of times that you see people killed. For example, just in Kamauzoo last night, two young African-American boys were killed in Edison neighborhood. And that's too awful. And so, the idea is a lot of tension in the nation, in our communities. You know, I do a lot of work in Jackson-Battle Creek, a lot of tension between the law enforcement community, the black community particularly. Somebody say, what about the other races? As far as I know, there's not a large Hispanic race here. And neither have the other communities had that kind of situation, although, yeah, in LA and some places are, we're talking about Albion. And what you see here, these young men, is any parents or grandparents associated with these young boys here? I always like to know so I know who to call. These guys have spent the summer working with Scott and law enforcement. I also would say this, this is the brother program of the Marish U Council. And we have the Marish U Council here, and they're going to speak in a minute about something they want to do for the years that we've had the Marish U Council. But our young people have to be involved. They have to be involved. We can't have the solutions for them, but there's their issues, their challenges. We can help and we can partner that. So, what Scott and I are doing as a law enforcement people like, that is what we would be doing. Let me start by having them introduce themselves, your name and your grade and the school that you go to.
My name is Loretto. I go to martial arts school in 3rd.
My name is Shilah.
My name is Alvin.
My name is Marco Frost. I go to the little, I go to martial arts school.
My name is Michael Warren. I go to martial, I go to martial academy and I'm in ninth grade.
My name is Chris Gibson. I go to martial academy.
My name is Tyrell Williams. I'm in seventh grade, I go to martial arts school.
My name is Navi Renee. I'm in seventh grade and I go to martial arts school.
Not in the primary school.
No.
He laughed around so much, junior, and I'm illiterate with that. I'm out of school.
I'm pretty sure you can hear my performance in the background. And I can never forget my, he's alive here. So much programming stuff we do together. But really, kind of complicated thing. You see the same news I see. You see the same things I see. So, do you want something like this to happen in Albion, you say? We should have, did, whatever. But I'm in the prevention field, always have been. And so, we saw the opportunity to ask Scott and Cheryl if they wanted to be involved in this endeavor because we're going to do, and I said, we had the Marish U Council. And should I say, by the way, all the members of the Marish U Council, could you stand, please? If I'm not paying attention, could you stand? Okay, and I see a buffalo here. You told me she's going to be here. And your daughter is where? They are, they are so ashamed, we pray and parents and brothers, they are, they got to learn to stand tall when they ask their parents here. Because Scott graciously took on the responsibility, you know how busy a police chief or police officer can be and so forth, to take on that added responsibility. Because there are times when him or his officers are called on to arrest someone or go prosecute someone. It could be a relative of these young men or even themselves. That's life. And then we got to think about what does that mean? And I tell people, that whole thing, our whole person is opportunity and a chance to do the right thing. Anything else? It's not my responsibility to okay something that's breaking the law. It's my job to try to help them not to do it. It's not my job to help Scott arrest folks, it's not my job either. But it is my job to help our young people as much as possible. So, we're very proud of these guys and so forth. Outside of that, I didn't ask them to dress up or prepare speeches for the day. Yeah, your meeting is going to be a long one without that. But at some point in time, they will come back and present themselves in a more professional way. And also, to say that they are more than willing to help. Also, this really the Holland Park project, because we know over the years, Holland Park is one of the places where we had this, this violence. But I would say, for the large part of this, somebody can tell me something different, that's not even a place where we had violence. A large part of that is the Holland Park Transformation Project, and it worked with everybody to make that a beautiful place. So, you guys got anything y'all want to say? I don't think so.
That's why I'm really excited about this program. Our goal here in the long term is to get them educated on what we do, train them in how we do what we do, and eventually graduate them in so that they are actually given uniforms and can help out at special events around the station and do other things. So, and make them part of our department.
So, with that, we'll say this, the council, I've been here a lot lately, but you might see me anytime if there's a reason for it. It's not that I have to have what this place is, I have. But I'm finding necessary, so-called calm to advocate for whatever that I'm willing, if I find necessary. The bottom line is, we've all been a white man, and we have to young people do. We all do it because if you wouldn't have to have the kind of confrontation that sometimes we're given up in. So, the young people, you know, they learn from what it is they see us do or not do. And so, I encourage everybody to do. So, you guys have a secret?
Some, I heard around town that it's like kind of brave to come out and do this, like wear uniforms with the police and stuff because some of, like, some people, they just don't like the police and stuff, like, it's kind of dangerous. But when I heard that it's like a good opportunity that we can do this, because like, Mr. Bonner told me that some opportunities like this don't come every day. It comes like, it can come like once in a lifetime. So, we just, so I was like, I just thought that if you come, like, if I just come and try to do more stuff that I can before all of my opportunities is over, then I might as well just do that because I know my friend, I'm not going to say any names, but he has a family member that just doesn't like the police and that he's scared to come. But I knew that if he come and a family member, like, just understands a little bit about, like, what was going on, I believe that he would be like one of the people, one of the people that would like be really good in this program.
The opportunity to, to be nervous and to speak with both sides and see I have the courage to speak. That's courage. So, I didn't have the girls come this way, coalition members, Marish U Council, and then we would have a confrontation after that. Is my issue a sign of older girls? Y'all sent all the girls. Okay. I sent a girl to somewhere. You guys, the council come up here and took the girl. At that, if you're my age, you forget sometimes that we got a young man standing in the group. But this is the Marish U Council, they leaders themselves, it also degrees, and we'll start with the young man first, so we hope we get it. Tariq.
Hi, my name is Tariq. I'm in the 10th grade and I go to martial high school.
My name is Tyte, Tyte Yanis, I'm in 11th grade and I go to martial high school.
My name is Jashali Wilson. I'm in the 8th grade and I go to martial middle school.
My name is Akaya Ridley. I'm in the 11th grade and I go to martial high school.
My name is Jayana Yasha. I'm in the 10th grade and I go to martial high school.
My name is Amaya White. I'm in the 8th grade and I go to martial middle school.
My name is Tyre Artis. I'm in the 7th grade and I go to martial middle school.
My name is Janice Larry. I'm in the 8th grade and I go to martial middle school.
A lot of you guys started out as like ninth grade with the Marish U Council, now some of them are upper grade. Some of them are taking early college classes, they are honor students. They have been here a number of times speaking on different issues in front of you guys. But we be back here and I ask people on different issue. And they was one of the first groups that spoke on the issue of Holland Park, that we spoke for the money for, for the casino and so forth. So, they have been involved, they have taken leadership through that, and they have a request for the council that you guys can help with.
On behalf of the Albion Mayor's Youth Leadership Council, we would like to say that we've enjoyed working with you, Mayor Domingo, over these past several years. And we would like to request the date for your last meeting because we want to honor you in some type of way.
That's not a check, you're so. So, anyway, we'd like to know the date of the last official reunion, kind of official meeting. Like I said, we started the Marish U Council as a, as a youth agenda, Mary and I, a couple of presidencies, and people right now. Being resolved that has been, these young people here and so forth, so it's been accomplished to a certain degree, and we're done. So, can somebody inform us when is the last official meeting?
It's the first, it's the first Monday in December, isn't it, when we do CINDI? Which meeting in December?
Yeah, but they have to do the same day procedure.
So, December 5th?
Can I request that somebody email me that date, so I can tell about the deal and so forth? And so, you phone me, I'll give it to them. And then officially, they want to officially be official and goes out where we started. And we would never like to get things unfinished.
So, I was beginning to wonder. How you been?
Busy.
You're all just as beautiful as ever. You really sounded off tonight. You don't sound nervous, you get up to the mic and everything else, great job, okay? My officially, if everything goes well, will be the last or the first meeting in December is when I'll turn the gavel over to the mayor. And that'll be that. Hopefully, everything will go well between now and then. But as you're right here, I have a proclamation for the National Recovery Month. And I know you're all involved in it, one way or another. Because you're involved with Harry.
Yes.
That means you're involved into more than just this. So, I'm going to read this, as long as you're all up here. Normally, I would reach out and say, Mayor Domingo. I want you to read this, please. Come on. We do this all the time. Akaya, you knew this was going to happen.
City of Albion National Recovery Month, September 2016. Whereas recovery from substance use disorders is possible through a variety of treatment and recovery resources along with the support of our community. And whereas the entire community is vulnerable to the triggers of substance abuse and dependence that include experimentation with drugs and alcohol, and you, physical, emotional, or sexual abuse experienced, and you unintentional misuse to over-prescription of medication, undiagnosed or untreated mental conditions, and general financial, physical, or emotional stress. And whereas statistics show that those suffering from substance use disorders do not get help because of the cost insurance barriers. Some said they were afraid of the nature. Some said they were afraid of the negative stigma of drug addiction treatment. And whereas the Albion Substance Abuse Prevention Services will continue to support the recovering community, providing education about how substance abuse disorders affects all of the people and helping more people enter a path of recovery, breaking the cycle of substance abuse within families and communities. Now therefore, be resolved that the City of Albion proclaims September National Recovery Month and supports efforts to those with substance abuse disorders. And witness whereof, I have parents who set my hand and caused the sale of this city to be a face. Mayor Domingo.
Thank you, dear. Wonderful job.
Please come back. You know you're our next leaders.
Yeah, it's, uh, it's probably National Recovery Month. I'm gonna have Helen Enson, who was a recovery person, to say a word. They're out there to that speaker.
To the speaker? What if I go this way? Okay. Uh, usually I don't need a microphone, unless it's recorded. They call me the vice chairman of the Albion Substance Abuse Prevention Coalition. I don't like that to word, use that word vice. I'm the assistant, makes it sound better. Makes it I'm in charge of something different than what I am. But on behalf of the coalition, I wanna thank the City of Albion for recognizing Recovery Month. It's a national program. Myself, I'm in recovery. It's surprising the number of people in Albion that are in recovery, but they don't want to admit it. I hate to say it, but there is a stigma about recovery. We're trying to change that to make it a positive and not a negative. And with the group of young people we have here today, it's gonna be a short trip to get it from a negative to a positive. I wanna thank everybody that helps. These kids do a lot on themselves, but they do need help from the adults. We're here to help you. If you have any problems, you can come to us. Harry's not the only one that can help you, we can too. I've seen some of you from our Vacation Bible School at churches. We've got quite a few programs here in the city that will help recovery. The least of not is the churches. Go to your church, talk to your pastors. You'll be surprised what they know. Thank you again for this award. Thank you for the recognition to make this National Recovery Month. May everybody be in recovery from something. Thank you.
All right, uh, my students have school tomorrow, they don't wanna admit it, but they do. So they have to read it, so. I'll see you guys outside tomorrow's.
Thank you all. Okay. Okay. Citizens' comments. Persons addressed in the city council shall limit their comments to agenda items only into no more than five minutes. Property decorum is required, are there any comments on the agenda this evening? See none, moving on. Oh, I'm sorry.
I wanna say, um.
Maurice, would you, okay, thank you.
I wanna say that, uh, my family, I am Sylvia Cheek first, but my family had a family reunion at Holland Park. They were there from Ohio and, uh, all over Michigan. And they were so impressed at what we had done with Holland Park. When we first said Holland Park, they said, oh, nope. But now, they're talking about, let's go back next year. And I wanna say thank you to all of you who helped and who did their part, and maybe many more that will, to make it a success, cause it is, it, it is beautiful. And they just sit in awe in the history thing, some of my friends were in there. But, uh, it, it, it really showed that we as a community can come together and do something positive without the negative.
Can I have your address, please, ma'am?
My address is six twenty-four North Ann Street, Albion, Michigan.
Thank you.
That's how I, Sylvia called me up to tell me about it. She's not the only one, there's been about four families that's had, uh, family reunions there, uh, in the last two months. And, and they've all called bragging about the park and how much they appreciate it and how nice it is. And I wondered, and I, I told, I said, well, thank you so much, but why don't you come and tell the community? Because we're still working on the park. We put into firekeepers for a grant to put up a pavilion, because that's the one thing that when you're having family reunions and group occasions that you need is a place big enough to have picnic tables and things like that, which we don't have. Uh, Mrs. Mitchell and I went to the first go-round at firekeepers, and when they got to our number, which is twenty-five, uh, kind of little discussion, and then they passed over us until they got down to about number twenty-eight, and one of the guys said, I wanna go back to twenty-five. And he said, I want twenty-five put back on. And so they put us back on, so we'll be going again to firekeepers. And as Harry was explaining, uh, his group went with us last time, his coalition. And I must say, the people were so impressed with those kids, they got out of their seats, they came down, they talked to them. And it just really, that's, I, I think that sealed the deal on us getting the money to put in the children's section. Uh, we are preparing now to get the money for the pavilion, we have the money for the teen section, and we're gonna be getting that in. But, um, a lot of people have called and, and talked about the park, so we thank you very much. Anybody who's got some money, if we don't care if it's five dollars, two dollars, make it out to City of Albion, Holland Park, and send it in, and we would be for money, very much.
Thank you, Lynn. And I apologize that this is for the agenda items, I'm sorry, that wasn't an agenda item, but. You got something to say? Pardon? Well, I just don't want everybody getting up now, and I can't continue with the, so you got something about the agenda?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, my name is Lonnie Bruin, I'm the president of Double Vision Center. My address is twelve hundred Hillside Road. Um, I was listening to the program that Harry put together, and it's an excellent program, and I love it. Uh, we got a program called Direct Impact. Um, what he doing and what we're trying to do is a little bit more deeper. Uh, a program, we went to, uh, the chief, and we told him the concern about the violent and the shooting and everything in the city. So we came up with this program where we wanted to do a program called Direct Impact. It's a program to where we get a lot of kids together, and pretty much, uh, we are, kids that get, you know, in the, in the mix to get in trouble with the law, we bring them into a, a situation in a cell where a police officer talk to them. And then after they do that, then we bring them into a, uh, cell where inmates talk to them. So what we believe that, a lot of kids these days is, is deaf, tone deaf to, uh, bad situation because of the way they was brought up. And the reason why I'm talking about this now, because it's a program I felt that, um, I went to the captain, and I felt that it should have took some more attention, because we just had two killing in Kalamazoo, uh, two teenagers just got killed and got left in the alley. Um, that's not far from where we at. Those is an impact that's what Double Vision is about. Um, I love what he doing, but at the same time, I wanna get to the root of the problem where the violence really come in at, when it come to drugs, when it come to, uh, alcohol abuse. Uh, my twin and I, we, right now, he got a child at the house, uh, of a baby that a month years old, where the mother was on drugs so bad, they came, the police came into the house and, and raided the house. The baby got taken, the baby was on my twin's house, right now, he got the baby, had the baby for a month now. We deal with a lot of high-risk kids in the foster system. So, what, reason I, like I said before, I bring this up, I brought this tension up to the chief, I brought this tension up to Harry. I just want them also, you know, why are they doing this program with kids that's doing good? And that's a good thing, and I applaud that right there. But don't forget about the kids that need it the most, too. And the kids that we trying to tackle right now is those kids that nobody don't wanna be, you know, bothered with. Everybody done gave it up on. We got a nonprofit. If nobody wanna take those kids on, give Double Vision that opportunity to take them on. Get with Double Vision, give them a chance to brainstorm, come up with a way to where we can help those kids that everybody pretty much done gave it up on. Um, so, not to take away from his shine, but it's a lot of kids out there need us. And if nobody else in the city really don't see that, you know, get with Double Vision, and let's sit down and come up with a plan to where we can really do something with the kids that impacted the most, because rather people recognize it or not, we deal with a lot of kids through the foster system, and the first thing they say is, you know, I got in, I'm, I'm going through this system because my mom got raided, my dad got raided, on drugs, alcohol. And, and that's the first thing they say, and guess what happened after that? They end up doing the same thing. So, I wanna open up a place to where we can get with those kids, let them know there's a better way. Mix those kids with those kids that's doing pretty good at school, and let them know, you know, it's, it's a better way, because a lot of those kids that was standing up here could help those foster kids and help those kids on the street that's hurting the most. And so that's what we trying to do in our vision, trying to get kids that was just sitting up here, get with kids that really don't have that opportunity like that. So, I wanna be able to bring some, a lot of kids from the, from Broadwell, Sycamore, all those kids that really don't, done gave it up, get in my voice. And so, and, and I'm just keeping that in mind, so whenever this program that, that chief doing with Harry didn't wanna do with us, I hope that they take the consideration that those kids that we trying to touch is those same kids that you don't have to take to jail tomorrow, or take to jail tonight. I just want people to take what we doing serious, you know, and think about all those kids that need, you know, it's in Albion, even outside of Albion in Batter Creek, Jackson, that's hurting the most, that looking for an outlet. And Double Vision, we trying to give them that. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you. The consent calendar, I'll do A through E. Yes?
Who's the funding source for this program, Harry and Chief?
I'm just saying that I wanna.
No, I just wanna, who, who's funding? Who's funding that?
I'm not getting into that. I'm saying I want the same support group that sponsors those kids. I want to give those kids that we live with, kids through the foster care system, the kids that deal with single parent, the kids that really done gave it up, that we see on the street every day when we, you know, go up and down there and see them on the street. I want those kids to come in here and have a voice, too. Those are kids that Double Vision, we deal with every single day, that we don't have a, a platform to be addressed it. But with the Double Vision setting, once we get open, that, that's gonna be our voice.
Thank you.
This is the first time I've been to a meeting, so this where you do for the streets, I mean, the sidewalks and stuff also?
No. And what, well, yes, you do, if you have a complaint about what's on the.
My name is Chris.
That's what I was trying to, that, this is about the agenda, that's why I said, it's not the, the time for citizens' comments. But if you have a comment, I do believe that is on here, the discussion and approval of the resident, no, 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 no. Let me get down to it here.
The Valhalla Drive?
Yes.
Yes, you can talk about that.
Okay, I'm standing for the ones in Valhalla Drive, um, about the sidewalks. When they first started the sidewalks and everything, we came down, and they told us that we would not be able to get sidewalks. So we were, um, informed back in June after a meeting, that they had a meeting and some of these people got exempt, I may be pronouncing that wrong, exempt from property, um, and sidewalks. But the ones on Valhalla Drive, we didn't get that opportunity, because no one knew anything about it. So, I came down, I did talk with Mrs. Mitchell, and discussed some things with her. But on, on, also on that, we have some of the Valhalla Drive have more than just one address for the ones that doesn't have sidewalks. So, we actually just trying to see are we gonna be exempt from that? What can we do, we not ask, I mean, we could get money back, fine, but if not, if we can take it and apply it to the taxes that we have already, I don't know how it's done. But, um, we would like to see something done, because we feel it's not fair, because we're not getting the sidewalks. So if we're not getting the sidewalks, we don't paid out this money for ten years, and it don't have anything. That's just like, you going to buy a new car and paying for a car and don't have it. So, that's our question, you know, I have Mr. Rice, Emery Shaw was also here, which I think she have more than one property here.
Okay. And we'll be discussing that here shortly, okay? Okay. Did you find it? The consent calendar, I'm gonna do A through E. Did anybody read, find any questions or anything? Any problems with any of the minutes? If nobody did, uh, be a voice vote on A, B, C, D, E. All in favor, say aye. Pardon?
I move that we accept the minutes as presented.
Okay. Moved in support. Are there any further questions? There are no further any questions. We'll do a voice vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same. A through E are passed. Okay. Items for individual discussion. Request approval for the Walk the Beat, event held downtown on October fifteenth, twenty sixteen, from three to seven.
So moved.
Moved in support, is anybody here? If you wanna come forward, I'm gonna just go let you, I haven't met you already on the phone, so, well, I'll let you go ahead and give your spiel about what you're gonna do there, if you would, please.
Thank you very much, I'll, I'll make this quick. Uh, there's a program developed in, uh, I'm sorry?
Name and address.
I apologize, I'm Clifford Harris, at four eleven Elizabeth Street. Uh, there's a program called Walk the Beat, first developed in Grand Haven by a man named Dave Palmer. Uh, this is his third year, I just went to it on August twentieth. And, uh, this year, they raised, uh, about forty thousand dollars to put instruments and the lessons to learn to play those instruments in the hands of vocal kids. Dave Palmer has a vision to, for this to spread all over Michigan, and through, uh, the Kershaw family connected to me. And, uh, Dave Palmer and I have, uh, decided that Albion should be the next place that will have a Walk the Beat fundraiser. Um, I'm a professor at Albion College, I was able to approach the school for some support. And, uh, there, as I put in my proposal, there are two dates that we would like to, uh, start. Today, I'm only asking for approval for the twenty sixteen date. Um, this date is specifically chosen because it will provide, uh, a lot of activity, some draw to downtown on the afternoon of the Albion College homecoming. So it'll be good for the city to try to pull some of those alumni downtown. Uh, it'll be good for the college, uh, to get their alumni more closely connected to the city that was their home for, for a few years. And we hope that it will be a, a strong boom to businesses downtown, which will be encouraged to hold sales and open houses during this time. Um, the, the activity is very straightforward, uh, four different locations have agreed to host. Two musical groups each, uh, overappeared up to four hours, playing back and forth about an hour each. Um, these bands will attract, uh, folks to, to town, just playing, uh, on the sidewalk, with each location providing its own, uh, rain location. Um, there, uh, each, each location will also be giving away a door prize to help attract people downtown. And then if we can swing the, uh, the legalities of it in six weeks, uh, there may be also a raffle. I've been talking to some lawyers since I wrote this document, that might be more challenging than I thought. So, so we'll see how much we can do. The idea is to, uh, is to use this as a training ground for volunteers to see what we can do. And then, uh, the idea is that in, during the same period next year, in October twenty seventeen, we'd like to run a much larger event, uh, that I hope will, within a few years, be as large as Festival of the Forks and bring that type of economic boom to the town.
Sounds good. Are there any questions?
So I'll ask the resource question. Um, what do you see, uh, as the need for city services, whether it be, uh, public safety or street, uh, cleanup and things like that, how's that gonna be handled?
Right. Uh, I'm, I wanna work with the city for all that sort of thing, it's the first event I'm throwing in downtown. And so, uh, we will, if the city has any concerns about that sort of thing, we'll work with them in every way possible, including providing volunteers to do anything we can, including cleanup and, and helping to, uh, control the crowds, keep them on the sidewalks. I hope we have such a problem.
Sounds good. Yes?
This is going to be outside, right?
The idea right now is to, is to put it on the, the sidewalks. With the, the, the reason that the business is, I went, I went to the Grand Haven event and spent a lot of time asking the business owners there why they were doing it. And in Grand Haven, they have to, uh, pay the bands themselves, they put up six hundred bucks, two hundred dollars for each band, plus another two hundred dollar door prize. So you're making a, a reasonable investment in that day. And every business owner that I talked to said that that was their biggest day of the year. It was bigger than the holidays, right? Bigger than the winter holidays. So, um, it seems like having the businesses, uh, having the band on the sidewalk and, and being able to see each location from the last location is key to, to build up the foot traffic. And the idea in twenty seventeen will be to, to, um, hey, take a square through town. Maybe the first proposal is, uh, Superior Michigan Hannah and Erie. Um, to maybe as many as twenty locations to get people to walk a route, check out the town, check out the things that the college and community are doing together.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there a motion yet?
Yes, they have a motion. You're okay.
Okay. No further questions from council? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same. It passes. Good luck.
Thank you very much. I need to go with my students.
I hear you. Thank you. Uh, B, request approval of boards and commission appointments and reappointments.
So moved.
Support.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Mike Timque for a reappointment for the ABA. Uh, Elaine Seedorf, uh, for the Albion Building Authority as well for a reappointment. Um, and both of those are opened from six thirty to twenty nineteen. Uh, Kevin Markovich will be a new initial appointment. There was one opening. He applied and he will be expired at six thirty of nineteen. Any questions on any one of the three?
None. Glad to have Kevin.
See none? I can roll call each or we can roll call all three at once if there was no questions?
All at once, I would.
Yeah, I'd say all at once if, if we're allowed to.
Okay. Uh, roll call vote on all three?
Councilmember Decker?
Yes.
Kraus?
Yes.
French?
Yes.
Barnes?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
And Mayor Domingo.
Yes, thank you. Uh, C, discussion and approval of Resolution twenty sixteen dash fifty-six, Consumers Energy Easement across City of Albion Property for the one oh one North Superior Street project.
So moved.
Moved and supported. Um, I met with consumers a week ago. Wasn't it a week ago? I don't know, last week sometime. And we spent quite a bit of time out front discussing what, uh, the plan is out there. They sent, uh, their engineers and everybody and I, I met with all of them and we walked through the whole project. Finally come to a decision that, uh, I don't know if you've seen the roadmap of what it looks like out front. I, uh, decided that because there is so many things out front, uh, a handicap accessible ramp, if it was put in, could only be put in by an aluminum ramp. It can't be put in the ground with foundations due to the, all of the things that are in the ground now. So, uh, after a lengthy, uh, talk with all of them, we come to the conclusion that, uh, what they're going to do is they're going to bore. But before they bore, they're going to bring in the city jet truck, the sewer truck. And we're going to spot check the depth of each one of these things that are there so we know exactly where they're at before anybody bores anything. Um, so we, then that way we can make a map that should have been done to begin with, uh, of all these items. They're going to bore at some areas in the neighborhood about five feet, depending on what we find and where we find it. They're going to put it in conduit all the way from Clinton Street all the way to the one oh one building. And it won't interfere where they have done it. They said they would work with us with anything out front. Uh, but if we have any problems down the road, just like we would if we hit a water main or a, a gas line or anything else, that, that this will all be under Ms. Dig and everything else. So, with that agreement and with everything that is here, uh, I said I would come back and try to convince the council that I think that we're good to go with everything that's there because of the way they're going to do it. And I don't see it to be a problem. Yes?
We maintain our rights, uh, through, through our attorney. Before they were saying that we would have to have permission from them to put in the handicap ramp.
Yeah. Well, all we would do is just to Ms. Dig, just like we would for the gas company or anybody else.
So we maintain our rights.
Yes. They'll, well, no, because we'll have to do the easement like they said. Am I correct?
Yeah, but any, any building or structure that we would put in, basically as long as it wouldn't materially impair
Correct.
their, their ability to use the easement, it'll be fine. I mean, we just have to consult with them and just say, hey, we're putting in a handicap ramp. It's above ground. It's not going to impair your access to the conduit and then it's fine.
However, last time the language was written that we would have to have permission from them to do what you're just saying now.
No.
That language
Their language, my
Okay, thank you. I'm fine. Thank you.
The permission comes through calling Ms. Dig.
Right.
So, are there any further questions? I do have somebody here, Bill, from consumers. If there's any questions of consumers, he's here.
No.
Everybody is satisfied? Everybody satisfied? Any more questions or anything before we go any further? If there aren't, we'll go ahead and have a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Decker?
Yes.
Kraus?
Yes.
French?
Yes.
Barnes?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
And Mayor Domingo.
Yes. Thank you all very much. And make sure that's cash deposited in my I'm kidding. I gotta watch how I say those things. Uh, it's too late to duck the camera now, Bill. They've already seen you. Thank you very much. And now we can move on. Am I correct?
Yes.
Okay. We're good to go. Okay. Thank you all very much for that. I know I've been holding it up. I hope it didn't do too much damage to the one oh one. D, discussion of Valhalla Drive sidewalk petition. I've read the petition. I don't know what the answer is. I guess that was the answer Cheryl had to come up with. What did you come up with?
Well, um, Mayor and Council, I, I did speak with the petitioners in regards to their request in regards to the sidewalk assessment. And as you know, we've had the assessment in place for many years and there, at the beginning of the period, was an opportunity for, um, the property owners to ask for an exemption. As years have gone by, it became apparent that because of declining revenues and the number of parcels that we have in the city, that the revenues created through the fifty dollar per parcel assessment weren't sufficient to do all of the sidewalk replacements or placement if there were not any in place at the current time. So what council had authorized and made was an opportunity for those individuals who did not have sidewalks in place um, to request to be exempted from the assessment for the two thousand and sixteen tax year. So that was published in the newspaper as well as circulated widely on our website and through, uh, the communication channels that we have in town, which is always a challenge, but we used every means that we had available to us. And, and the June meeting, you authorized for those who did appeal to have those exempted. So in consultation with our attorney, um, we are of the opinion that that period was announced properly and posted and, um, that period has now lapsed. However, my recommendation to you is recognizing that it is challenging in Albion to get the word out to each and every resident. So going forward for next year, two thousand and seventeen, what I'm proposing is that if we either include it on the winter property tax bill or an insert with that property tax bill, so at least each parcel owner will receive, well, we can guarantee they should receive that information so that we can announce further ahead of time of the opportunity to ask for an exemption for two thousand and seventeen, which I believe is the last year for this assessment period.
Are there any questions from council? Okay.
So they're not, they're not going to recognize time to be at the hall. It's, it's just
I understand what you're saying, but, um, it's actually it's just a loss then to the ones that doesn't have the sidewalks. They, they still want to get the sidewalks or what? They're not going to do anything. No sidewalks, no exemption, no nothing.
I, I think that's essentially it. Um, there was an opportunity at the beginning of the period and then there was another granting, uh, most recently a few months ago. So if the property owners did not apply during those periods of time to be exempted, um, we don't really have a mechanism to allow for it.
Okay, so I understand when you were saying that you had put it on the internet papers, different places, how they, you know, supposed to have gotten out. But just like I said, a lot of people don't do internet. A lot of people probably don't even get the papers or whatever. So, just like the June meeting, nobody out on Valhalla Drive even knew anything about the meeting until the Apple family.
I don't disagree with you. I, other than feeling bad, I, I don't really have a solution, um, for that situation. We tried every mechanism we could think of at that time to try to get the word out. Um, that's why I'm suggesting going forward that we at least put it in with the prior tax bills, with the December tax bills, where you can ask for exemption for the July taxes.
For July. So that should be put in our taxes for two thousand and sixteen, seventeen, for the taxes.
Yes.
Hi, Everine Showers, eight oh five, Valhalla Drive. When this tax came out, the beginning of it, when they first started, I came down here and told them that I didn't have a sidewalk. Was they going to put a sidewalk in? And they said no. I said, well, why do I have to pay a sidewalk tax? Cause I'm a walk on these sidewalks. That was a lame excuse. And now you're saying, just because we didn't come down during this period of May to ask for an exempt, that we can't be exempt. I asked for it when it first started and they weren't giving an exempt. So, I don't think it's fair at all. You know, that was my period then to request, um, to stop paying it. And somebody gave me some smart answer. You know, it's not fair to me. I, regardless I walk on these sidewalks, it, there's not a sidewalk in front of my house that I'm paying for. So another bill come up, another thing that you want, and it don't, uh, affect me, then I got to pay for that too, right? I don't think it's fair. I don't. Not at all.
Everine, may I ask, how long ago was, you, you're saying the first thing I put to say, actually years back?
Years back.
Okay. Now, let me say about us now. We're trying to be more letting people know. Years back was a different council, was a different administration. So now we're, we're trying to be more upfront so that you know what's going on. I understand what you're saying because I have come down before and asked about things and got answers that really didn't make any sense to me. But now if we can make arrangements to get it in either a water bill or on your taxes so that you'll know the year before that, you know, that's not going to be happening anymore, uh, we're trying to be transparent. So it's, it's not going to be here any longer. And I know you say that's a big
Yeah, you say that, but we'll see.
And if I could add, I'm going forward in consultation with the mayor, council and our attorney. We want to look at a different approach to the sidewalk assessment so that it's based on what is the actual needs for a, more of a district as, as opposed to a citywide assessment.
Right.
So, we'll, we'll be working on it.
My name is Emerson Rice and I live in Valhalla also. Uh, when they first put the assessment on, I talked to the city about it at that time and the city manager we had at that time. And they said, well, you got to pay it anyway. And I don't feel like it's fair. Uh, we don't have curbs, we don't have sidewalks, we don't want them. We like this way that our street is and we have a great, we have a great neighborhood. And, uh, so like I said, I think that we should be taking off the, shouldn't be, shouldn't be paying the tax on the, on the sidewalks because we don't have them, we don't want them. So, they would have to tear up everybody's yard and everything else to put sidewalks and curbs in in the first place. So, thank you.
I understand. Thank you.
Okay.
It, it pertains to the street, the street sidewalk. I guess our street is our sidewalk. Uh, I called down here for them to pick up the street that the plow people tore up. That I couldn't come out and, and mow my lawn. I mean, it took just now for them to come do it. So, the, the, the speed time here is very slow to the response. Pastor Nichols had to call them and then they came out. I didn't understand that. You know, so you're trying to be transparent, but I'm seeing that you're not doing what you're supposed to do when you're supposed to do it. And that was a problem for me.
Thank you. Okay. Um, Cheryl, the city attorney, I'm taking, they're working on this. Uh, there's what, one more year left on the assessment? Okay, so this took place nine years ago. So, uh, the only person I think at that point was here was Cheryl. So, um, I know there was some, some back and forth with the whole thing and so, uh, we're trying to work diligently. It, it doesn't make any difference what we do. Nobody's going to be happy one way or the other. So, um, like I said, we'll do what we can and hopefully we'll make it right and start again if that's what the process is going to be. So, thank you all very much for your comments. E, request approval for twenty sixteen dash sixty. The city council authorized the implementation of the, uh, recommendation necessary to receive the redevelopment ready community certificate from the Michigan Economic Development Corporation, the MEDC.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Are there any further questions on that presentation that was done earlier? If not, we'll have a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember French?
Yes.
Barnes?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Decker?
Yes.
Kraus?
Yes.
And Mayor Domingo.
Yes, thank you. Uh, city managers report?
Mayor and council, at the back of your package, you have, um, departmental reports, um, for you to read at your leisure. So I won't go into those in detail. I do want to thank Finance Director Tom Mead for four pages of summary of what he's been doing for the past two weeks.
Thanks, Tom.
And Councilmember Barnes is correct in saying that our, our staff, especially the, well, everyone is really working hard and putting in long hours and there's a lot going on and it's really exciting, but we're, we're also human. So, um, but some of those things that are happening, um, as you mentioned, redevelopment ready community, the RRC is moving forward. And thank you for the adoption of that resolution. We're looking forward to working with, um, Rosalyn Jones as well as the Michigan Economic Development Corporation and our EDC and staff to start implementing some of these best practices here so we can attract and retain businesses and, um, and developers. There's a series of town hall meetings to talk about the comprehensive plan that will be coming up. We'll also be talking about our efforts to start a rental registration certification process so we can get feedback from residents. So if you'll take note that on September fourteenth, there's a town hall meeting at three PM at Tenet Hall. Thursday the twenty ninth at two thirty AM at the Charles Snyder Building on Cooper Street. And October twenty seventh at seven PM at Lewis Chapel. There's planning a couple more sessions as well, so we'll announce those days and locations. Um, one of those will be a follow-up, kind of a wrap-up so we can show to the residents how their suggestions and comments are being incorporated into our comprehensive plan. And council, I wish, I wish you to take special note that you have some study sessions scheduled. Um, the first one is, um, September fourteenth, that's with the land bank in regards to downtown developments and development agreements. September nineteenth, there's a sister city reception at the Isman House. That'll be five to six thirty. So that precedes your council meeting on the nineteenth in which you will be, um, presenting a city proclamation to the sister city contingency who will be here as part of the celebration of the twentieth anniversary of the Sister City Exchange Program, as well as the fiftieth anniversary of the Festival of the Forks. And then on Monday, the twenty sixth, you will actually have a work session to go over the draft language for the rental registration ordinance. Then on the comprehensive plan, as we looked at what is required by the state in their, um, regulations and legislation, the November twenty eighth date you had as a public hearing for the city council is actually a public hearing by the Planning Commission. And based on the resolution that you recently adopted, the city council has assumed the right to have the final approval of the comprehensive plan. So what will happen on the twenty eighth is the Planning Commission will have the public hearing. They will give a resolution of their recommendations to you. hearing, they will give a resolution of their recommendations to you. So what I would like for you to consider is to schedule a special meeting yourselves that week, so between November twenty ninth and December second, for you to approve or not the recommendation from the Planning Commission. So we'll be following up with you to find out which day and time works best for most of you to have that special meeting. And then also, on Wednesday, December twenty eighth, there will be a meeting in regards to downtown parking. You know, sometimes you have to be careful what you ask for, and when I first came here, I was like, what a problem that we'd have, what a wonderful problem to have, that we'd have to worry about where to park downtown Albion. Well, we're getting there, so, but we want to plan and be aggressive and assertive in terms of what makes the most sense, so that we can be a place that welcomes our visitors and patrons. So part of that discussion, and we're inviting the downtown businesses as well, that will be September twenty eighth. Tentatively, we're looking at six thirty at Cascarelli's, that has not been finalized, but that's what we're looking at. So we'll be talking about the best practices for handling downtown parking, and any questions in regards to analyzing the downtown parking situation. We'll be working closely with Rosalynn Jones again, as well as getting assistance from the state and from the MSU Extension Planner. So it'll be a very much a collaborative conversation with a wealth of contribution from local experts that we're very much appreciative of. And Harry Bonner has left, but he is one of the individuals who's going to be recognized this Thursday at a breakfast for the WD Boy Scouting Tribute to the Jim Hazel family, and he's one of the recipients, that'll be at the Schuler's Restaurant at 7:30 AM, so you have that on your desk. And a student, Elena Faruk, as well as some other students from Albion College, thought it would be a good idea to have a remembrance of the September eleventh event, since this marks the fifteenth anniversary. So that will be held on the college quad area by the Rock, and that will be Sunday, September eleventh at 8:00 PM, and that's open to all the public as well. And we just received notice that another one of our members of the Albion Public Safety Department will be retiring, so Sergeant Etter will be retiring towards the end of this month, and we want to thank him for his many years of service, and we'll try to plan on something appropriate to celebrate in moving into the next phase of his existence and contributions. I'm sure he'll be doing something. And Mayor Domingo, you had asked previously in regards to this scrap metal and the vehicles. We have a inventory of those items, especially in the DPW area. We received a quote from Zix in regards to the vehicles, and we're trying to obtain the estimate relative to the scrap metal before we can determine what's the approximate price, and then we can determine if we sell it to our employees at what price, or if we're gonna go to auction. But we're working on that.
Can I get a copy of what you had?
Yep.
Please. Okay.
And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Yes?
I have a question for our city manager. In your packet, we received this notice from WOW, that they're moving, they're now going to charge to receive a paper bill. And I just wanna say that I am opposed to this in all sorts of ways, that we've got folks who can least afford it, don't have access to computers, who do not use the internet, and they're now going to be adding a surcharge to them so that they can actually pay their bill in a traditional way. So I'm wondering if we as a city can draft some sort of language or response, that this I think hits the people who can afford it the least. And if we're using, you know, if WOW is the way that they are getting their, either their internet or their television, then this is just a, yeah, this is just unfair on lots of different levels. And we've got lots of people who don't use the internet, who don't do online banking, who don't have credit cards to make that payment an easy thing, and I think this is just a bad idea all around. And they are our franchisee, I think we should be able to at least draft some sort of language that says that we're opposed to this.
Okay. I'll work with you on backing the appropriate language, I don't disagree at all.
Okay. Thank you.
Maurice?
Yes. This is our city manager. The study sessions on Wednesday, September fourteenth and Monday, September twenty sixth, where will they be located?
The Land Bank.
I just moved my page, I'm sorry.
There you go.
The Land Bank is at City Hall.
Okay.
What was the other one?
The rental registration.
That will also be at City Hall.
Okay, thank you.
If there are no further, future agenda items? See none? Citizens comments, persons, I'm sorry, what?
Motion to excuse.
Excuse. Oh, motion to excuse, that's an accomplishment, sorry.
We get a phone call.
Garrett Brown? Yes.
Move, support.
Move, move. Moved and supported? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same? He is excused. Citizens comments, persons addressing the city council, shall limit their comments to no more than five minutes, and proper decorum is required. If you will step forward with your name and address, please, and your comment.
Marcola Lawler, 918 North Berrien Street. I would like to bring the attention to what some of the surrounding areas of Albion are doing with the, as far as the police force. I would like to either be a part or somebody come up with an idea of how we can comfort our children during a possible arrest or CPS type deal, or a rescue mission that our officers may be involved in. One of the things that came to mind was something I would like to call the Love Program, and that's where they have teddy bears for their children that are kinda shaken up about what's going on, or I'm sure all of us has had a teddy bear, or a fire truck, or a blanket that we could hold on to for security, as far as you being a child that just needs some type of security. So maybe we could seek the community foundation for a grant, or someone can help us write one, but I would like to see a discussion with the officers in the city with some type of idea like that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Marcola, that's a good idea.
Anyone else?
Hello, I'm Catherine Delapaz at 309 Lincoln, and I'm here to follow up on a phone conversation I had earlier with Mrs. Mitchell, and I just want to say that as a homeowner in Albion, my husband and I, we did our research when we chose our garbage hauler, and we would be opposed to any city intervention that would not allow us to have our chosen garbage hauler. So please don't sign a contract with anybody that would take away our free choice. And also, I wanted to ask, with the grant for taking down the blight homes, which is wonderful, is there any forum or community input or list that tells us, these are all the blight homes, or please tell us if you have a blight home on your block that you want us to look at, how do we know? There's a blight home on Lincoln that I'd love to seek on, how do I add that to the list?
Thank you. If there are no more comments, we will ask to be adjourned to go to an executive session for the city manager.
So moved.
Moved and support, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same? My office downstairs, in five minutes, hopefully they turn left the arrow.